I'd like to call the meeting order, stand and say the following. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody, for coming. We have no visitors wishing to speak and no written communications at board. Did we have any reports of committees? I can report that we did have a Capitol Committee meeting yesterday by Zoom. They're doing building-specific meetings now, so this was the first one with Smallwood, kind of just going through some of the needs that have been identified and bringing all the people from the buildings in to see what might need to be added, if things need to be moved off with different priorities. So that was about an hour long, I would say. Mrs. Wazinski, Mr. Rampado, Mr. Crozier, a bunch of different people were on, going over that list of needs, wants, what have you. It was reported that the building condition survey was supposed to, I believe, start today.
Correct.
So they're underway with that to move us along with our Capitol Construction Committee here. All right, anyone else? All right, we'll go right into the superintendent's report.
Well, it's an exciting time of year for a multitude of reasons. Mrs. Goldhawk and I were just talking about how quickly the holiday season is approaching here, but it also brings with it the very first budget presentation for the next school year. So Mrs. Wazinski is here to provide us with a very preliminary budget forecast for 2023. Welcome.
Thank you.
Yay, it's budget time!
Well, thank you. So at previous meeting, we talked about our long-range claim for our reserves, and this feeds right into that. It's the same format that we've used the last several years and will continue to use it for familiarity's sake and for understanding purposes. We'll go over revenue assumptions and projections, and pretty much every piece of it's an assumption at this point. The same thing with expenditures, and then look at our overall budget forecast and review a summary. So the first piece and one of our largest revenues is our property tax levy. We have an increase of tax exempt plan increase of .08%. So it's very small this year. That includes about $31,000 of an increase to last year's levy if we were to go out at the cap. Our tax benefit growth factor is .0014, so very small, indicating very little growth in assessment with the town. And we estimated CPI at 2%, which is the maximum that is allowable under the tax exempt legislation. The final figures for CPI will be released in the coming months, and we will be able to submit that to the state controller by February 28th. The capital exclusion is the second piece of the tax exempt formula, and those are expenses that have been previously authorized by our voters, typically through a capital vote. So the exclusions become the difference between our debt service payments and the revenue that we earn in state aid. So you're allowed to add that on top of the tax gap. So this year, it's about $1 million. It's a couple hundred thousand dollars less than last year, which is what's pushing our tax exempt population down to close to zero. On the state aid side, we have projected some significant increases. As the building aid, we're anticipating about $1.3 million of an increase. This will be the first year we have full aid with our current large capital project. We finished Phase Two, and we're trying to get Phase Three finished up, but there's a couple of things holding us up, but it's in good shape. So we're doing this, getting that full aid next year. On the foundation aid side, which we've all heard a lot about foundation aid and the promises to fully fund foundation aid in the future, we, at this point, are estimating a $2.4 million increase. Last year, we received 1.7. 2.4 is still conservative. It could be as high as maybe even 2.8, but at this point, we are trying to be conservative so that if, for some reason, that doesn't come to fruition as it's been promised, we don't have a huge hole to climb out of.
Yeah, I mean, there's reason for optimism there. As you've surely heard, Governor Hopeful has settled the campaign for fiscal equity lawsuit, which is basically at the issue at hand is around fully funding foundation aid. So there is, at this point, a commitment, an early commitment to fully fund foundation aid, and we have seen preliminary aid runs, which could be up to $2.8 million increases in foundation aid for Amherst this year, or excuse me, 2023 and 2324. But we're taking a conservative approach with this projection until we have more information. So there's a lot of positive signs looking towards fully funding foundation aid, and for us, that would be a welcomed change because, as all of you know, up until last year, we were only 59% of our full amount we were receiving, and maybe we had a $1.7 million increase last year, which put us at 68% of our full amount. So we're still quite underfunded at this point, and we look forward to seeing our politicians follow through with that.
The next section of revenue that we'll review is our miscellaneous revenues, and we do expect to see an increase in this area as well, about 7.5% to over $400,000. And this is mostly due to our year-to-year sales tax. So we've had a lot of discussions over the last two years because there were threats of it being cut anywhere from 10% to 90%. Our sales tax revenue is $3, $3.5 million. And we actually have been doing very well at the end of last year and the beginning of this year. It looks like we're going to come in high, a little bit high on this year's budget, so we increased our projections for next year as well to kind of match where we think we're going to land. We had a small increase of about $35,000 in our pilot revenue. There's no new pilots being added, that's just the changes. As the projects complete their renovations and their value increases, the amount that they pay in taxes increases as they go through, up until the point that they're at full value and they come off our pilot and go back on the tax rolls. And then we saw some small decreases in day tuition and health service valings of about $60,000, and then, of course, our interest earnings dropped this past year at rates for everybody included. We do continue to monitor that. We do still have a strong investment policy that will continue to work through the year as we have our revenues. On our transfer side, this is the area that we normally talk about, our fund balance appropriations and our reserves. At this point, we're recommending that we keep our reserves at about $80,000, which is $20,000 from unemployment and $60,000 from tax cert, which are equally offset by expenditure lines on the other side of our budget. A change in this area from last year, we are recommending to increase our appropriated fund balance up to $1 million for our contingency line. This current year, it was $806,000. We did want to kind of round that up and up to $1 million, and that is for expenditures that are earned planned or unperceived. Really gives us a lot of money really in our budget. We've had it for several years, it's come in very handy, and it's for a multitude of things. We'll talk about some of the other areas that we kind of went over budget so far this year. They include special ed, perhaps health insurance. You know, there's different areas that we can use these funds if expenditures come in higher than the original plan.
And it's important to note that's equally matched on equal sides of the equation, revenue and expenditures, so there's no impact on the tax payers.
So overall, we have a 0.08% tax exempt plan increase, which is about $31,000. On our total state aid, we're looking at a 19% increase. That's assuming our foundation aid increases to 0.4%. Our building aid's going up about 1.4, I'm sorry, 2.4 million. 1.3 million on the building aid, and I kept all of our other state aids flat. So we didn't increase our BOSI's aid, our high cost textbook, we left all of that as soon as it was coming into this year. So we'll update all of those numbers as the state aid runs are released in January and the pilot ones are released in April. Our miscellaneous revenue is just under, just over $6 million, which is just over a 7% increase. And then transfers and appropriated fund balance at $1,080,000 gives us an overall revenue budget of $68 million and here $10,000. For the expenditure side of our budget, personnel, we have estimated an increase of about 4.8%. And this is a little bit higher than we would typically have at this time of year because we're starting to bring in some of the positions that are in our stimulus grant into general fund as we had planned. So when we received our stimulus money, our PRIS money and our ERBA money, a lot of people were recommending they did one-time purchases with those dollars because they're not going to be renewed. We decided, as a district, that we felt it was better to bring teachers in to better support our students, but we needed to make sure we had a solid plan of how we were going to incorporate those positions into the general fund. So we rolled them in slowly, five a year, three, four to five a year, and this is the first piece of that. So this includes four additional positions. On the benefits side, our ERS rate is projected to actually increase significantly from 16% down to 11.6, which is a decrease of over $200,000 on our expenditure budget. Unfortunately, the TRS rate is projected to increase. And even though the increase is much smaller of a percent, from 9.8 to 10.5, the amount of TRS salaries that we have in the district are much, much higher, so that's why it shows an even higher increase than the ERS is decreasing, at $305,000. FICA med rates are staying the same, but because our salaries are going up, that amount goes up. Health insurance, we are projecting an increase of $200,000 to our budget, which takes us up to $7.1 million. It's a 2.9% increase, but we will continue to work with our consultants and will finalize that budget in April and May, is when we determine what those rates will look like. Workers' compensation, we are part of a self-funded consortium and are creating this base on three years of experience. So this year, we have a really, really good year falling off and an okay year coming on the books. It wasn't a terrible year, but it wasn't a great year. So we are expecting to see an increase in our premiums, but we haven't received or decided on those rates yet. And then on the retirement benefits payments, we actually have budget lines that support our payments to our retirees at the end of the year. It's about $260,000, and we only pay that out based on the actual payments that we need to make to our retirees, but every year, that line is underfunded. So we're trying to start increasing that little by little to get a little higher up to what we're actually spending each year. In general support, we are seeing a small increase. We are expecting our liability insurance to go up a little bit. Not only do they have, you know, small premium increases from year to year, but they have a lot added significant services, especially in the area of cellular insurance. So that's one of the reasons the premiums are looking to increase. This year is not looking like it's going to be a great year utility-wise. Our budgets are very tight this year. When we went into it, I think we were going to have some push-in, so we did build in some increases in next year for that as well. And as for our water, electric, gas, telephone is pretty good. Buildings and grounds, materials and supplies, we get a small increase of $16,000, and then we have some miscellaneous increases of $2,000. In this area, we do maintain our capital outlay line, which is a dedicated line of $100,000, which allows us to do small projects around the district and receive aid the following year. And then again, we're looking to increase our contingency line from $806,000 to $1,000,000. And as Superintendent Panella mentioned, fully offset by foundation, or by, oh, let me throw this right. Fully offset by bond balance, so it has no impact on tax payers.
Mrs. Wazinski, I know I've been part of the conversation we've had regarding our capital outlays, and we've had a multi-year outlook for those. Do you recall off the top of your head what the 2023 project is year mark for?
Sidewalk repair at Windermere. Current year is sidewalk repair at Windermere, next year is sidewalk repair at Smallwood. Instruction is also looking like it's going to have an increase of about 10%, $460,000, and this is due to tuitions both for charter students and for special education students, health services, and some transfers between BOSI's up into our general fund lines for residency services. For the charter tuition, it's a significant increase of $195,000. Our rate's roughly $11,500 per student. Last year, we had 40 students, and so far this year, we have 53. So that's a significant increase that we're absorbing this year, and we're projecting to see that increase again next year. And for special education, we're increasing that line as well. Every year, we try to keep one or two slots as a push-in in the budget for new students. Program changes, not only have we used that so far this year, but we have replacements on top of that that we need to cover. So that's another area where having to take in some money is very helpful because you just never know what those lines are going to end up being. We did discontinue our grant writer service this year, and in the community education line, it's not an increase to the program, but prior, we had half of the expenditures in contract services and half of it in salaries. So through our internal audit, we tried to clean that up a little bit, make sure that we're paying everybody as employees, which is more appropriate, so we're just shifting that money up into salaries. Our BOSI's budget is also a very large estimate, but it's an increase of 23% or almost $1 million. So the first piece of the increase is the continuation of our technology replacement plan. So we have completed one IPA. This current year would be the second year of our IPA, which we've been not brought forward to yet. We want to make sure that our technology team is in place and that we are reviewing that so that we can make a recommendation for a project that will take us into the future. But we will also now plan for the third IPA, which would be a payment that we pay next year. So those would be the three that we would plan to keep, and as the first one rolls off, then a fourth one would come on. So this should be the last large increase we see on our BOSI budget. Again, in special education, we keep two to three spots push-in for program changes and students that move in. In this instance, not only did we use those, but we had three additional students to move in. So our BOSI's budget is very tight this year, but we anticipate that many of those students will stay, so we will have the increase in next year as well. CTE are our students who are attending day programs, and that is based on, next year's bill is based on current year enrollment. So coming into this year, we had 72 kids enrolled last year, this year we have 99. So it's wonderful that our students are taking advantage of that service, but next year, that's going to cause a jump in our bill. And then overall, we have small increases in the day-to-day services that we receive. And we will have a meeting in late January, early February, where we'll look at getting a better idea of what their cost increases are, and then we'll have an updated BOSI's budget in February. And then the last note here is just to remind everyone that even though we're seeing a large increase, we did have decreases in other areas of the budget, and because we'll be receiving more BOSI's aid, we're able to roll those three IPAs in budget neutral. Transportation. Transportation is an exciting area right now. It has been very challenging this year with our driver shortages and our buses. We did add a bus this year to reduce the density in some of our packed buses. We haven't necessarily had drivers for every bus to be able to realize that reduction, but they are working on it, and we do have new drivers coming in all the time. I am very happy to report that First Student has offered us another two-year extension at CPI of an increase, which is much, much less than we think we would have resulted in if we had gone out to bid. The other piece that's exciting with First Student is we are exploring the possibility of adding six, seven, and eight buses next year so that we can better service our students and alter some of the bell times of our buildings to better align not only with each other but with the best educational needs of our kids.
Yeah, so the interesting work that's going on right now relative to that is, for those of you that have been on the board for a number of years, you may recall there was budgetary need to save money back in 2010 or somewhere in that area when the state's finances were quite difficult and they were cutting aid to schools. So we went from having a larger fleet with less responsibility per school, per bus, and bell times that were, you know, pretty well aligned, elementary and then middle and high staggered before and after the elementary, to what we currently have, which is sharing buses across, you know, two or three different runs, which can pose difficulty, and we've seen it magnified in this era of COVID, you know, where if we're short one driver, there's a domino effect of how, what the impact is on the two or three subsequent runs that that driver may have. Or, you know, if there's something that happens at one of our buildings or inclement weather, the buses are thrown off early in their runs, it's typically at Smallwood in the morning or afternoon, you know, it ends up affecting all four of our buildings subsequently. So what we are looking at in our study with transportation is, you know, we really have three main goals. We're looking to more closely align our elementary schools with the start and end time, with the goal of moving Smallwood later, because as you know, they start around 7:45 in the morning. Prior to the switch in 2010, both schools were around 8:30 to about 3:00. So we're looking to be closer to, you know, that 8:15 to 8:45 window, and we're still working on the specifics with First Student and how the routes may change. We're also looking to move our middle school up earlier a little bit, because those of you, most of you that I'm looking at have had middle school students recently, you know, they start late and they end late, about 9:05 to 3:40. So we're looking to bump them closer to 8:45-ish to get them out a little bit earlier at the end of the day. And then our third goal is to try to lengthen the day so that we have some increased instructional time, you know, so we can try, have more contact time with our students and our teachers to try to mitigate some of the learning loss that has resulted from the pandemic. So there's a lot going on behind the scenes administratively with us and First Student looking at, you know, multiple scenarios, you know, in anticipation of the increased state aid that we talked about already. So once we know whether or not that state aid is going to come through, we'll know whether or not we can increase the funds to change, to make those changes. The good news is, as you're all aware, transportation is an expense-based aid, so while it may be $800,000 to a $1 million increase in year one, the ongoing cost will be, you know, 30% of that. So we're looking to make a change during a time when we may be getting large increases in state aid.
And finally, we have a small increase in our debt payments, more than offset by the increase in building aid that we'll be receiving, and this is not new debt, these are just our scheduled payments for existing bonds. So overall, we have a 4.7% increase in personnel and an increase of about $500,000 in benefits, but that includes PRX and TRS changes, as well as health insurance change and the workers' comp change. Instruction is going up again about $500,000, and BOSI's is looking about $990,000, which again, is a large increase, but those are estimates. We will continue to refine those and will work with the special education department to get some better projections on what they think their placements will look like next year. Transportation also shows a 24% increase, but again, that is an estimate, it's a police folder in the event that we're able to move forward and adjust a number of buses in our fleet. And we did increase our contingency line to $1 million, fully offset by our fund balance, so there's no impact to tax payers, but it allows us flexibility in our budget for our own expenditures. Overall, it gives us a expenditure budget of just over $69 million, which is a $4.7 million increase, 7.4%. Before we move on to the next side, I just want to point out the areas in blue in the next two years. The reason those personnel lines are highlighted in blue is because we wanted to show that we are continuing to roll in our stimulus positions. So it's about $240,000 in year two and $260,000 in year three, which will then have all of the added positions that we added rolled in to our general fund budget and no longer in the stimulus budget. So the $240,000 and $260,000 are the stimulus-only positions. The rest of the increase is projected, our regular contractual increases. So overall, we have a revenue budget of $68.6 million and an expenditure budget of $69 million, which is a gap of $423,000, but there are significant estimates on both sides of those numbers. And as we start getting more things finalized and work through the budget development process with the administrative team, we'll have an updated budget presentation for you in February.
Mrs. Wazinski, too, none of these figures include potential retirements, breakage from that.
Nothing. It's assuming every single person that's on staff right now continues to be on staff next year with their contractual increases. So this is just a summary of what we've talked about. The major increases in our revenue are state aid and sales tax, our expenditure increases, our personnel and benefits, BOSI's, special education, charter tuition, transportation, and our debt service. So those are the big areas that we're looking at. We do have a $423,000 gap, but again, you know, that's closed with the adjustment of any of those numbers on either side of our budget. A million dollars is fund balance that supports the contingency line, and $80,000 usage of our reserves, also supported by equal expenditures. And then our gap closers are the same as they are every year, increases to state aid above our projections, salary breakage from retirement, and then any changes to our revenues or expenditures, possible levy increases, and additional reserves. February 8. During the month of January, Superintendent Panella schedules meetings with every building and every department, and they meet with me and myself and Dr. Shingman and Mr. Viall. We talk through the needs for the building from every aspect, programmatic, HR, social ed, classes, where they want to see their building go, what they want their department to look like, and then we build our budget from there.
I'm looking forward to a different approach, hopefully, to the executive budget proposal in January. As you know, there's been a change in Albany in the governor's mansion, and over the past decade or so, the budget proposals have not offered a lot of insight or help for our work that we have to do to develop our budget when they come from the governor's office. work that we have to do to develop our budget when they come from the governor's office in January. My hope is that Governor Goldhold will take a more reasonable approach to her budget presentation in January, which would allow us with information to get working a little bit more closely on our budget projections in anticipation of the April 1st deadline for the finalized budget. So it'll be interesting to see how that goes.
Same comments?
All right, thank you. I'm sorry, just a comment, maybe a request. It seems like that, you know, we had quite a significant jump in the charter schools this year. I think I'd be interested to hear, you know, where are these things going? You know, is there something we're not providing? Is there marketing we should be doing to try and keep? And I think we had some information several years ago about this, how do we keep more of our kids here? What are we doing? I'd like to have a follow-up to that. Where are these kids are going? You know, how would we lose that many more charter schools this year?
Well, I can tell you that so far this year, at least 11 of the adds are kids that are moving into the district, because as they come in and they show up on the invoice, they're not registered with us. So oftentimes, they are kids who were attending those charter schools, but they lived in Buffalo or Sweet Home, wherever.
Right.
They want to stay in their school, but they've moved into Amherst. So that's where they come from. So far, I'm not aware of any kids that have left our district to go to charters. We can certainly look at those numbers for you.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's difficult to track for that very reason. One of the benefits of practice and procedure that is now in place is that prior to sending in payments to charter schools, we verify that the students are registered in our system and they are residents within our district, because in the past, we would be invoiced from the charter school, and a lot of times, we would pay the invoice. So we have added a layer of a double check, and we've actually found in some cases where the opposite has happened, where a student may have started here and was in a charter school and then moved out of our district, but the invoice comes to us. But they may have relocated to Buffalo or Chikwaga or, you know, somewhere else, and we're able to closely track that. So yeah, Mrs. Bezinski, I think is right on with her answer. In many cases, the increase is beyond our control, and it's with kids we've never even met, because they would have already been enrolled in the school and living elsewhere.
Well, I'd also like to see what the numbers are. Because that's the, what's the total number of charter schools?
So it's $11,487 for students this year. So I did a projection for next year of $11,587, times another 12 or 14 students. I don't know what number I put in there, but that's where it came from. Plus, you have to assume there's an increase in tuition for the other 40 students that are in that.
So the total number is paid between 11,000, so that's about 50,000, about 3/4 of the percentage, don't you?
I don't have any to the rate.
I think more information would be justified, you know, like where we five years ago, what's the trend, what's, you know, I don't know.
How can that be?
We're spending a lot of money, you know, is it, you know, 153.75 to 102?
So every year, before I make the payment, I track the students, track their enrollment date in the district, as well as unenrollment date if it's applicable. And if the next year, I don't get bills for that kid, I start looking for them. Where did they go? Oh, they came back to a high school. Oh, they moved to Sweet Home. So once a student is identified as a charter student, we don't lose that, there's still a way to find them. So I have that.
Well, I guess the way that I look at this is that people who move into the district because they want to go to our schools, right? So we know them. So why are they moving in? You know, so we, much of the data might be, why are you moving into the district? You know, and, you know, you don't like our schools anymore, come to our schools, or you're buying a different tune. I guess that's what I think.
Yeah. Several of the addresses are similar to the apartment complexes that are within our district. So when we charter schools, they include student roster, needs of the student, they receive any additional services, special education services, and then we also have their address and neighborhood. So we see a lot of apartment complexes, which is why I made the comment of the answer of they're already at that school within their departments. But I got that data in detail from when I started, so we have at least four years, but we can go back further. But it is then, the rate is set by the state. We don't set the rate, so, you know, we get that every year. And then that's the rate of the charter when our charter students decide to move.
Yeah, I think at one point, you know, it was like a list of which schools and how many kids from our district were at those schools and stuff like that, right?
I have it by charter.
Yeah, another difficulty is there's an individual story behind each individual family and decision. So, you know, some of the ones that come to mind that I've been aware of could be divorced situations, you know, where one parent.
I don't think we, you know, specific details on every single case. I think, you know, like Adam said, you know, are we looking at trends? Is this continuing to grow? Is there something we need to do to, you know, stop paying so much out?
We will need a motion for new business.
Make a motion for new business items, E1, A through G, 2, B through E, 3, B through E, G, and H. I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving new business items, E1, A through G, 2, B through E, and 3, B through E, G, and H, please say aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries 6-0. With that, I'd like to welcome any new team members we have here tonight. I understand that we have one in the audience, so welcome aboard. We look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming aboard.
My name is Adrian Love. I'm second in the position of senior manager. Looking forward to meeting with the club, especially the team that is there.
The team is fun to be here, so.
We're looking forward to getting down to business on it as soon as we can. We start day dependent on Monday, so we're going to send you through the board.
You're approved now, so.
Good job.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You control everything that makes our department most worth in the district.
Congratulations.
Scare him before he starts.
This is Tony. I know we have one follow-up action item with the request of Mrs. Goldhaw and Mr. People. Do we have any others?
Can I just clarify what we're pulling together for that?
Can I?
Just clarify that request.
So this is what I surmised, why and how there's been a charter school increase to include the trend in increase of students.
Yeah.
Is that about it, or?
Maybe that breakdown of like what schools they're going to and how many kids, is that, that's what's around?
Yeah, I mean, I think.
Readly available information.
I think what we could probably provide is the schools that they're going to, maybe the grades the kids are in, whether or not they were enrolled here and when they exited, or if they have always been in the charter and moved in. Like, those are the type of things that I think that we have readily available.
Yeah.
Aside from, you know, making phone calls and having conversations with individuals.
I'll take a look.
Yeah. So we can try to take a look at the information Laura tracks and compile it in a way that is presentable.
So every morning, you're going to be in the elementary schools, kind of have which school that would be in the district?
Yeah, we can add that. I mean, certainly, we know by address, so we could add that.
All right. We have been asked to review a decision of the superintendent of schools concerning a student discipline and a personnel matter. May I have a motion that we convene an executive session to hear and decide this matter?
A motion that we convene an executive session regarding a particular person and student disciplinary appeal.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It has been duly moved and seconded that we convene an executive session to hear and decide an appeal concerning the student discipline matter and personnel matter.
Can we just take a vote?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
I apologize. See, I.
Yeah, okay. Okay.